Good evening and welcome everyone who is from home to March 23rd AMSA Board of Trustees Meeting. This meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with the Governor's most current executive order regarding open meeting law. We, the quorum is 6:00 PM and I will call this meeting to order. So, welcome everyone. Thank you for, thank you for being here. So, we have a pretty packed agenda. So, if there's nothing else, we'll get started. Sarah, do you like to call the attendance?
Okay, so Bella Gorman, Don Capello, Jill Schaefer, Laura Burgess, Nick Poirier, Roger Jarrett, Sheila Kelly, Samini Sempath, and Zachary Prescott. And I believe Mara's not here yet. And, okay, good.
Great. So, if we could have a volunteer for timekeeper?
I can do it.
Thank you, Zach. And Zach, just for planning purposes, you don't need to be at the executive session later.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Sorry that I didn't think to let you know. So, we'll move on. We will move on to public comment. Bella, did you receive any public comments?
Don, you need to say that it's being recorded and live streaming.
Okay. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the AMSA Facebook page. Thank you, Sarah.
I have not received any public comments.
Okay. And is there anyone on the line for public comment? Not seeing anyone. All right. Next up, moving into the vote section of the agenda, we have a number of minutes listed. So, we've got one, two, three, four sets of minutes. I would take a motion for each one individually.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 15th?
Is that Bella?
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
Would you say your name when you say it? Because I can't keep up with it. Was it?
Laura Burgess, I second.
Thank you. And I'll do the roll here. Okay. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly? Sheila?
Yes.
Samini Sempath?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes. And Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, motion passed.
Okay. Motion for February 16th?
Motion to approve the February 16th minutes?
Oops. That was Bella?
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
Roger.
Sheila, I'll second.
Sheila, second. Okay. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes. Sorry, couldn't find the button.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
Samini Sempath?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott. That's everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, March 2nd. Motion to approve the March 2nd minutes. Bella?
Okay, Bella Gorman?
I second. Laura Burgess.
Okay. Roll. Okay, Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Okay, Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
Yes.
So, Samini Sempath?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
I abstain.
Abstain, okay.
March 15th.
Hold on one second. Okay. Got it. Okay.
Motion to approve the March 15th minutes. Bella?
Bella?
I second.
Nick? All right. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly?
I abstain.
Samini Sempath?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott?
I abstain.
Motion passed. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. So, the next we have Finance Committee report. It looks like finance has been very busy. Leanna, Ellen, the whole team. So, I'll turn it over to you to lead us through the next steps. Thank you.
Okay. I believe Leanna's going to start us off with some slides about Silicon Valley Bank, now known as Bridge Bank.
Oh, I cannot share my screen.
Oh, wait a minute. You'll have to change the setting. Whoever's the host.
Mike?
Try now.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
All right, we're going to try this one. Oops. Are you seeing my PowerPoint or are you seeing the board?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, we've had quite a busy couple of weeks. As many of you know, Silicon Valley Bank was taken over by the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation. And we're just going to summarize what has transpired with our cash and our loan during this period. Now, I can't move it. Okay, there it goes. All right. So, Friday, March 10th, we were notified of the Silicon Valley Bank failure. As you may or may not know, Silicon Valley Bank bought Boston Private a few years ago. So, all of our money was with them as well as our loan. So, that day, we had an emergency Zoom meeting with a few of the board members and Ellen and myself. And at that meeting, we decided that it was best to try and move with the bulk of our money that we were, that Silicon Valley Bank withholding to the tune of $8,643,000. We were going to move that by writing a check from Silicon Valley Bank to St. Mary's Credit Union, which is the bank that held our money previously to getting the loan with Silicon Valley Bank. Then, so we did that somewhat in the morning. And then, at noon, there was an announcement that the FDIC had already taken over Silicon Valley Bank and that all of our money was going to be frozen for the weekend. But it would be available on Monday morning, but up to the insurance limit of $250,000. So, then at 1:46 PM, I received a call from St. Mary's Credit Union that they would not be able to honor the check and reverse it out due to the FDIC takeover. So, that was Monday. Then, on Sunday, we received some good news. Ellen was actually on a call with the charter school.
That was actually off Friday, Leanna. That they called, St. Mary's called us on Friday.
Oh.
That was under your Friday slide, not Monday slide.
Am I? Oops. Yeah, sorry. That is Friday. That is Friday. That's how it all happened. Did I say? I'm sorry for saying Monday. All right. So, then, on Sunday, Ellen was actually on a call with the charter school leaders that were all impacted by this. And the FDIC announced during that call that all of our money would be fully insured on Monday morning and available to us at 9:00. Then, on Monday, the following Monday, we cut a check. It was our priority to make sure that payroll was covered. So, we cut a check from St. Mary, from Silicon Valley Bank to St. Mary's for $500,000 to cover the payroll that was going to clear on Friday, the 17th. Also, that day, there were some emails forwarded to us from Silicon Valley Bank, Bridge Bank, SVBB, stating that it was going to be business as usual and that all of our deposits were safe. We also had a call with Mass Development, who's the guarantor of our loan. And there was some concern that, they expressed that not all of our loan money had been drawn down yet. Later that day, I attended a Zoom meeting with 11 other charter schools, charter school CFOs that had been impacted by the SVB takeover. We shared some ideas, prepared a Google document. And AMSA Charter School was right in line with how all of the other charter schools were proceeding with the priority on meeting the Friday payroll, moving the money to a secure bank. Then, Tuesday was a snow day, so not much happened that day. And then, Wednesday, we cut another check from Silicon Valley Bank to St. Mary's Credit Union for $8,360,000 deposit in St. Mary's. There was a five-day hold on the available funds due to the size of the check. But the funds became available to us yesterday, March 22nd. Later that day, there was a Zoom call with the new CEO of the Bridge Bank. And during that call, he outlined four possible options that would happen with the Bridge Bank. The first one is the bank would continue as a standalone bank. The second one is the bank would be sold to another financial institution. The third one is other investors would buy it and the bank would become a private bank. And fourthly, ideally, the bank will become liquidated. On Thursday, Silicon Valley Bank, we spoke with our rep from there. He assured us that the term of the loan, the current interest rate, and the ability to draw down funds would remain intact regardless of which option happened to the bank. But that we should confirm it with our attorney, which we later did that day. And he also believed that to be true. Although, he couldn't make any recommendations on how we should proceed with the project at this point. Then, just this past Monday, we held an additional meeting between a few of the board members and Ellen and myself to discuss moving the project forward, given the current bank situation. Three options were discussed. It was decided that we needed more information to make an appropriate decision. And then, later that day, a Zoom meeting occurred again with the charter school CFOs that have loans at Silicon Valley Bank. And there was discussion of a potential opportunity to band together to buy our loans at a discounted, to buy back our loans at a discounted rate from the FDIC. And that pretty much summarizes it.
So, just quickly, for especially anyone who's at home on Zoom watching and isn't, possibly wasn't even aware that we were with SVB, just a little bit of background because the question I think that I'm getting most from, from staff and other, other folks is, you know, why were we even connected to SVB? People heard of Silicon Valley and they're thinking Connecticut. And, you know, what, what in the world was, was the school involved with them for? And so, just, once again, just to reiterate that when we first found and got involved and started talking to the bank, it was Boston Private Bank. And they're a bank that's well-known to be very friendly to charter schools. And, you know, we've had, we've had a very good relationship with them. And the gentleman that we work with has been, has been great with us. And it was, it was July of 2021 when the bank was actually purchased by Silicon Valley Bank. And part of the, the loan that we had, part of the covenant and agreement was that our operating funds and our money was there. And that's why the other charter schools were involved as well. And why I was involved with the other leaders and Leanna was involved with the CFOs was because there was nine of us involved, including the Charter School Association itself. So, this wasn't something that was, you know, that all of us jumped in with Silicon Valley Bank. We were all customers of Boston Private, who then became customers of SVB. And all of our money was there for all of the charter schools because it was part of the covenant of the, of the loan. And the other thing that came, became clear initially, there was three of us that were on that call with the new CFO of the, the Bridge Bank. It was myself, Leanna, and Don. And one of the things that he, he mentioned, which Leanna did mention in her, her slides, because it certainly was accurate from what he told us, was that there was a possibility that the bank would become a standalone bank in and of itself, the Bridge Bank. We've later found out that that's not actually one of the cases internally. That's not what they're talking about. It, it's three options is what we've heard from, from our person at the bank. And those three options are that it could potentially be liquidated, it could be bought by another bank, or it could be bought by investors. And so, we're waiting right now to find out what will happen with, with that. So, that is that part of the updates. Anyone have any questions on SVB?
I guess I just want to reiterate, just state one more time, that AMSA's own reserves, own money has been transferred over to St. Mary's. And so, and to the tune of, I think, $8.4 million or something to that. So, I guess I just want to say that one more time.
So, it's there and it's collected funds now, Bella. Leanna brought it proudly to me yesterday. It's, it's safe. And that money is covered by FDIC along with state insurance that is purchased by credit unions. So, once again, we, we definitely feel like our money is safe in the little nest, again, at St. Mary's. And then, the Finance Committee will begin to talk about what next steps will be. Which brings us, Roger, over to the investment policy unless anyone else has any questions about SVB.
Just a, just a quick follow-up. I just want to thank you both because working through the weekend, we both, you know, we all know how dedicated you and Leanna are. But it's just nice to probably hear a thank you. I mean, that was just, obviously, this was an all hands on deck kind of situation. But just great job, both of you. I know it was very stressful for both of you. So, just passing along my appreciation. I would love to know it, you know, as things develop, more about your final bullet point, Leanna. But I assume if you had any more information, you would have shared it. But I think that that's an interesting one about the banding together situation. So, not for tonight, but I just thought that was a really interesting new point that I hadn't heard yet. So, that's, we'll look forward to your updates as, as more information becomes available. I know it's still a fluid situation. So, just thank you.
There was an initial conversation at Finance on Tuesday night. But we're going to, you know, Leanna.
I'll brief. Leanna, I'll brief on that because we did, we did make a decision in Finance on Tuesday.
Yeah, but there's, I don't think there's any reason to not stay in the loop, just to hear what people are doing. So, that's, that's where we are right now, Don.
Yeah, Roger, I received another email today with updated information. So, we'll talk.
Yes, please. All right. Other, other questions for Leanna about the SVB scenario?
I have a question that might mostly come to bear for more the next segment around the financial investment strategy piece. But it's kind of relevant to what happened here. And I was wondering about our strategy around ensuring that the funds were indeed meeting an FDIC insurance sort of minimum that.
How do we hold that for the investment policy? It's a great, great question. Let's, let's hold that for the investment policy document. I can, I think it's best addressed there.
Okay.
Other questions for Leanna? All right. Thank you, Leanna. It's a great presentation. I gotta get my, oops. Trying to get to my other screen here. Where are you? So, we've got three votes in Finance that we discussed in detail. Since I can find my board on track screen. It decides to log me out. I said, so three votes are, I'll just summarize the three votes that we're going to do. Bear with me. So, we had a very detailed discussion in Finance. So, the, so the first vote is to vote on an investment policy that Leanna and our representative from Silicon Valley Bank slash Boston Private worked on in, in great depth. The investment policy is attached. And we made one minor change to the investment policy in Finance. I don't know which version of the document is attached to me. I think it was the prior version.
We have updated version attached to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the purpose of this document is to give, to provide to a financial advisor the guardrails on which we would use to invest AMSA's money. And basically, the summary of this is that if you're particularly looking at the section or, or the document is US Treasuries, US Securities, CDs, and other equivalent documents. And in particular, to answer Samini's question, one of the bullets, the third in the bullet for obligations of US commercial banks, it will be limited to CD deposits and equivalents with FDIC insurance or their equivalent. And their equivalent is like, for example, if we invest, had money at a Massachusetts Credit Union, it's all money at a Massachusetts Credit Union that purchases insurance is completely insured.
Sure. I'm not sure that you're fully answering my question, Roger. If so, may I ask my question now?
Sure.
Okay. I guess even with the St. Mary's, the, the money that was transferred there, I'm not certain that I fully understand with such a large amount. Does that go into one account? Does that go into multiple accounts? So, the FDIC 250K limit is then applied to each account? How, how do we, how do we work through that?
I think I can answer that, Leanna. You can help me if I, if I misstate something. Money at a Massachusetts Credit Union is 100% insured, provided that the Massachusetts Credit Union participates in the Massachusetts Insurance Credit, Credit Union program. So, they, they buy, so FDIC ensures the first 250. And the Massachusetts Credit Union Association insures all money above $250,000. And it doesn't matter whether it's in one account or whether it's in 50 accounts. The insurance is per depositor. So, for example, the St. Maury and Eagles is a separate entity from the, from AMSA. So, they have independent insurance. But whether, for AMSA, whether we had three accounts or 20, you still get a total of $250,000 of FDIC insurance.
Okay. Is the choice of St. Mary's something that other charter schools have also gone towards? Or is that something we picked?
St. Mary's was our previous banker before we moved, had to, before we had to move the money to Boston Private as part of the agreement to take the loan for the building with, with Boston Private.
And so, that doesn't hold anymore, that agreement in terms of the loan and where the money is?
I'll, if you don't mind, if I, if I pop in. So, we were actually really lucky, Samini, that Leanna had kept a couple of small accounts or three small accounts still at St. Mary's. So, we were able to move money very quickly. Where others, it's a, it's a, actually a pretty big deal to create new accounts on a board like this because it's signatures and it's, it's a lot of, a lot of back and forth. And it takes time. So, we were, we actually were really lucky about that. So, yes, you're right. The part of the covenant of the loan is to have that money over at SVBB. And we don't now. We took it out. And we, the feeling, the general feeling is, is that they broke a covenant by falling apart. And therefore, you know, we have every right to move the money out. And we, and we did during our conversation with Todd Broder, who is the attorney who helped us pass the, the loan originally, Leanna and I spoke to him. And he said, absolutely, we did the right thing. And that it would be certainly defendable if the bank comes back at some point and says, you need to put that money back. And I think that, well, what, what he said was what eventually, we would get a letter from them that said, you know, that you're, you're breaking a covenant and this is what you need to do. But that they would also give us a period of time to rectify anything. And once we did get that information or that letter from the bank, we would obviously bring it to Finance and say, okay, what kind of decision are we going to make? And to the board, where do you want this money to go? And how much do you, do you want to go? We talked about the fact that, I mean, I would never move anything 100% back anywhere, no matter where that, that loan ends up. Because eventually, it will probably get sold off. Yeah, I think we're always going to want to have six months of, of money to pay our operating expenses. I mean, this was absolutely, you know, horrendous experience, as you can imagine. It really felt like we had lost $9 million through our fingertips. But the big concern was payroll, right? We're, we're literally having conversations about, well, if we can't pay our electricity, I guess that's okay, as long as we can make payroll, right? So, we don't ever want to find ourselves in that position again. And so, you know, I would always recommend that whatever the covenant is, whatever we decide to work out with the next bank, that we never put everything 100% over there. But I would keep it where it is until we find out where that loan is going to end up. Like I said to Thatcher, who's our banker, the money is there. It's not like we're off spending it, right? It's there. It's being held in a safe place. And if they require it back, well, we're going to have to hear from them first.
Okay. Yeah, I, that answers most of my questions. I think the concern I have is, again, if the money is going to move, then we are adequately protected. Part of my watching what was happening over here was that we, because of the bailout, it was all fine. But we sort of weren't automatically protected in the way that we had the funds where, where it was. So.
You're absolutely right, Samini. And that was the, the, really the horrifying part of all of this. We were notified by our auditors back in October that we had instructed the bank when we moved the money there to put it into an ICS account. And we had instructed that, to them to do that. Leanna has documented proof that we did that. But the bank, when they set it up, they did not set it up as we had requested. But we didn't realize that because you look at an account and, you know, whether it's ICS and on the background. But it was the auditors, actually, that had picked that up in October. We let them know. We spoke to Finance about it. So, so we were aware and we were in the process of creating this investment policy that, that Roger's going to present tonight. And we had started to talk about T-bills. We started talking about various options. In fact, we were going to pass it at Finance that next Tuesday night, when all of this went down. So, it, it was just, you know, that was a mistake on, on the bank's part, unfortunately. And we didn't catch it. And so, that's, that's how we ended up where we were.
I guess just following up on that, you know, the fact that they made that mistake and the fact that I know Leanna had some difficulty even having, trying to move it into ICS account, it's just, it was, it's, it's unbelievable to me. And it's almost like a lesson learned. But at the same time, I'm a little angry with the bank.
I agree, Bella. I share that. And we spoke to Thatcher about that. And he told us that we wouldn't need to work with the personnel involved in that any longer. But I, absolutely. And, you know, is, was that some of the way that they, that Silicon Valley Bank advises things to be done? I don't know. But hopefully, we're not going to have to worry about that in the future. I just hope this resolves quickly so that we have, you know, a really clear idea of where this loan is going to end up. And we can start talking about, you know, next steps. We, we've got a couple of the votes coming up. One other vote coming up tonight as far as moving forward with the, the construction design drawings, which was our plan. which was our plan initially anyway, and that was a vote we were going to take in March. It's already been through finance. But, um, you know, we have, you all have a lot of decisions to make. Um, and those decisions are going to need to be made probably this summer. Um, about, you know, depending upon the timeline on this bank getting bought out or sold off or liquidated.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look for, well, I mean, as, as we learn more, we will, we will be able to make decisions. Um, we also plan in finance to take a, um, uh, to some sort of, to capture the timeline and issues that occurred and lessons learned from our, uh, from this last week. And we will report back to the board, uh, with that.
I guess one more thing I'd like to add, I think to some of these question of are we leaving the money at St. Mary's? I think this investment policy that is outlined here is suggesting that not all of it is going to be sitting at St. Mary's. So that, that's kind of the point, right? If to maybe diversify our portfolio, definitely maintain some money for operating expense. Um, but to have an investment policy and an investment advisor that can help us with that.
Yes. Well said. Um, other questions about the investment policy? I could, um, if there are detailed questions, I can go through section by section or but I mean, we, 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 uh, did, did, uh, review it in great detail in finance. So I looked to the board. Well, I think I just opened up, is there, are there any questions about the investment policy? Uh, hearing no questions, I'll take a motion to approve the investment policy.
Sorry, can I back up and ask one more question?
Certainly.
Okay. You said the conversations were in finance. Um, could you say more about who else, uh, other than the finance committee was involved? So you, uh, talked about a financial advisor, um, just trying to get some transparency into everyone that would, has their fingerprints on this document. Of course, the board has to approve it, so.
Yeah, so, uh, may, I'll answer, I'll take it. So this, the, this, uh, document was primarily developed by Leana and the person from Boston Private slash, um, uh, Silicon Valley Bank. The, the overall policy was, was taken. I, I had participated minorly in the review as myself as well. It was then brought to finance and, uh, reviewed in the finance committee. What would happen next is, uh, the next step along this process is for the board to approve the investment policy. And then once we have an investment policy in place, we can then engage with an investment advisor who would make a recommendation to the finance committee as to how to, uh, invest our money. And then the finance committee per the policy would, um, review the recommendations and act on that. And some of the, depending upon the actions required, we would probably likely have to come to the board to create any new accounts to accomplish the new invest, investment policy.
Um, how often will we be reviewing this particular policy? And the other question is, are most of the outcomes from our investments going to be discussed in the finance committee? Or will the full board get a report out at any given periodicity that we should be looking for?
Um, good question. We did not set, uh, reporting guidelines. So clearly we would, you know, we would have the, as part of the monthly budget, it would be there. But I think you're, it is a great point that we should have a dedicated quarterly half year timeframe report out on our investments.
And I believe it, it, there's somewhere along the line, we, we've read that, um, they should be reviewed. The policy should be reviewed annually.
Follow up question. So Roger, I know you're looking for a vote on the policy. Are we also voting any expenses related to a financial advisor or is it too early to say? Is this just a policy vote?
This is strictly the policy vote. We would come back separately. Uh, once, once we have selected an advisor and they would make a recommendation. And as part of that would be there, the expenses we would incur.
Gotcha. So I'd love to see reporting that's basically direct line of sight from the investment policy itself to the accounts that we're setting up as well as the outcomes from each of them. Um, in language that hopefully will be something that we can all sort of look at and decide together. Yes, we're going in the right direction or not and we're putting all the safeguards in place. Um, uh, trust the finance committee to do the initial vetting, but I'd love to see it on the full board.
I agree.
All right. Is there further discussion on the investment policy? And if not, we could certainly entertain a motion to approve or?
Motion to approve, Samini.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Oh, Roger will second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Take a vote. Roll call.
That'd be great, sir. Thank you.
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Nick Poirier?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly? She gone?
Sheila dropped off about six twenty-five, Sarah, if you need to note that.
Thank you, thank you. I'll make note of that.
No problem.
Uh, okay, I'll put her up here. Okay, uh, Samini Sampa?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
Everyone?
Did you get more?
I did.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next.
All right, next up is the Loop Road.
Yes, excitement. Um, so the, uh, finance committee, uh, reviewed the proposal to move forward. And this is to actually do construction in the summer, in this coming summer, twenty twenty-three, to build a loop road around campus so that we no longer would have our traffic running through the middle of campus. And this also by splitting this from the construction will enable when, when, once we get to the construction phase of the, so that the building and the loop road construction wouldn't be occurring at the same point in time. And.
Roger, this, this was my section and, and I think there's more detail that needs actually to be explained to folks.
Please.
Um, so back when we met, um, the finance committee met on March seventh. Um, the, the finance committee had Matt and Bob Walden was with us. And it was decided that we were going to recommend that the most up to date estimates um, were within range enough. It was an increase of six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from what we had heard in the fall. That was within range enough that we were going to move, um, move this forward for, uh, for the, the construction design drawings to be done. And then eventually it would go out to bid in August. Um, lot obviously has happened since then. And, you know, I, I think it would be dishonest to not say that we don't know where the loan is going to end up and we don't know exactly, um, if the building will end up getting, getting started, um, in September or not. I think that's going to play out in time depending upon where, um, our loan ends up. What we do know is that we've been told by the bank and the attorney that our three point three one interest rate and that the twenty year fixed term is legally intact, right? Um, and yet we don't know who's going to, who's going to purchase it. So when, that was the original recommendation that finance was going to come on March ninth, that meeting didn't happen. Uh, because honestly, it just, everything started to, to kind of unravel. When finance met this week, um, on Tuesday, it was decided that what the vote was going to be was that we were going to, um, finance supports and is bringing to the board. Um, that we want to get the, um, Loop Road project done regardless, that was always going to be paid out of AMSA cash. And the second vote would be that we will, we want to continue to, uh, engage with the architects to do those drawings. Those drawings, which will be done in the next several months, will, will prepare the school to, to, to build this building. It may be September, it may not be September, but we will always own those drawings all the way from the schematic, all the way through these construction design drawings. So the two votes tonight are, are one, yes, we want to continue. We're going to go in, in permit to the city and we're going to get the rest of those drawings done. And that's one vote. Um, and the other vote is that, just jumped out of my head because I'm sixty now. Um, so it's, it's, and it's the summer for the Loop Road, okay? And that was always going to be paid for by AMSA cash. So those, those are the two votes. And I think it's really important for you to know that just by moving these drawings forward, doesn't mean we're tied in necessarily. Although we have done some research with the attorney on what penalties there might be. Um, if we were to back out of the project now, we can discuss that at another time. But I, I do think, um, it's important that we get the construction drawings done. I think Nick has a great and actually perspective that I'd like him to share, um, from the contractor's side. Um, just so that's out on the table and you all, um, have all the information that we have from finance.
Sure, back, back to Ellen's point, I think, um, so the two different, two different points that we're talking about. The Loop Road is something that we've already budgeted, we've already talked about. And we need to keep this moving forward because the big piece of it is that we're going to look to start and finish it the summer so that it has the least disruption to the school. I think that everybody can agree that getting this Loop Road in, no matter what happens after the fact, whether or not the project comes in over budget, under budget, irrelevant because of the traffic flow, this will help the school immensely. We've got it already budgeted and if we push it off, we're going to incur more costs, we're going to incur more delays. And the delays, more than anything, are going to impact the school year when we start back up. So that's one piece of it. The second piece is when we start talking about pulling the plans together, apologies. We are seven, eight hundred thousand dollars into the design. We are pretty much at the final phase of getting all the construction documents done. We need to get this final phase done, which keep in mind, we already have this money earmarked to be approved. So we need to get this final phase done so that we can actually get these plans out to bid. So we know what the final number is. And so I think that that's, that's really important. Um, all of us are in agreement right now that we do need to wait to see, one, what the numbers come in at, but two, more importantly is what's going on with our loan. One thing to keep in mind is that in the construction world, word travels fast, especially when it is a public job. Especially when word gets out that AMSA had the construction loan with a bank that has collapsed. And so to try to move forward without having a proper plan in place will cause panic with contractors and subcontractors. They'll either refuse to bid a job because they'll be nervous about getting paid. They'll pad the number thinking that they're going to have to carry. And the second, the second that their applications for payment are not paid on time, they are going to start leaning the building and causing a lot of legal problems. So I just wanted to give that little bit of a background, not that we're voting on moving forward with the project right now. But time is of the essence. We've already talked about approving, and, and I believe that we've already got the funds set aside for the Loop Road. We've already approved and got the funds set aside for the design team. And that it makes sense for us to continue to move forward because we're not at that final stage that we need to make a final decision on whether or not to spend the final twelve million dollars to get this job done. Um, if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy, happy to answer them.
I have a couple of questions, Nick and Ellen. Um, one was, thank you. That was really helpful. I, I, for me, it's more, uh, I, I would be, I think you answered this, uh, which is that I'd be excited to see that the road in general uh, helps incrementally, um, even as we're waiting for the rest of the design to come through and the project to, you know, sort of come to fruition. Um, because I've seen AMSA go through what it does for, uh, you know, school pickup, drop off and everything else. Um, so I think you answered it as, well, come September, AMSA will be in a better place in terms of the road itself, if we can get this done. Um, that's perfect. Thank you. And then the other question I have is in terms of timeline. Um, in order to wrap this up, as you said, with minimal impact to the school, um, you know, academic year. Uh, what does that mean in terms of the design coming through? How long and then when construction starts and is everybody ready to go? Um, if we are in a position to vote today and then, you know, we say yes, go for it. So is it, are we approving the design phase today and then we're going to come in and vote again for the rest of the, the construction phase? Or how would you like to do this? Go ahead.
De- definitely. Um, I, right now, it, once you vote tonight, um, I am going to immediately let the OPM know that, that you voted to, to continue, um, getting the drawings done. Um, that is going to set us up for the permitting phase and we'll be going down to the city on April, the morning of April sixth. That keeps our timeline right, um, right aligned where it needs to be. Um, in order to be able to start that, that road and get that finished this, this summer. The plan has always been, um, that, that as soon as that was done, they would kick off and they would break ground on the building. But obviously they've got to go through the phase of the bidding process, right? And that will happen in August. So it's that, it's that bidding process where, you know, we know that, that WT Rich will be, you know, the contractor, we've been working with them for the last year or so. But then they bid out all the pieces of the project, right? And, um, you, yeah, they, they, they have to get three bids and they pick the lowest one and they put together their team. And that's how they come, they give us the number that you'll all vote on in August. Um, and then that's the number that, that if there's change orders and we all agree to it and then it might increase. But that is the number that it would cost, um, to do the project. Nick?
I, I think the important thing too is to keep in mind that this, these two votes are really formality votes. Because we've already agreed and voted on all of these things anyway. And what we did was to make sure that everybody felt comfortable with the process was that we put certain steps in place to make sure that we were hitting certain milestones with certain dollar values that the entire board and the community felt comfortable with. And so I think we're going into it a little bit more in depth, more because of what happened with the bank and the issue with the loan, which as of right now has zero impact on these two votes. Because we still have till August or September to get our loan situation figured out. And again, we were going to be coming out of pocket for all of these items anyway. So again, tonight's two votes are really just a formality of everything that we've already talked about that the board, I believe unanimously has voted on along the way. And I think that it's just, again, we've got a little bit of a wrinkle that doesn't directly affect what we're talking about tonight, but may have an effect down the line. So really, tonight's a formality vote. Uh, things that we've already talked about, things that we've already decided as a team that we're going to move forward with. We just, now we're at the final step to actually make that decision to say, yes, let's move forward with the Loop Road to happen in the summer so that we have the minimal impact on the school. And yes, let's move forward on the final phase of finalizing the construction documents so that we can get to that last piece of figuring out exactly what the number is and be able to eliminate all of the budget conversation and talk legit numbers and what can be afforded and what can't.
Does the road construction green light today mean that they can, so, uh, Ellen, you used the word break ground on the building. Um, but did you mean that the, I guess I'm asking, so, uh, can we realistically assume, for example, that school closes and last day of school? And then we're already preparing to get construction started on the Loop Road at that time? I'm trying to understand that timeline, just so that we can set expectations for the AMSA. I'm trying to understand that timeline just so that we can set expectations for the AMSA community overall on what we're looking at.
Think of it as, as two, this is like a little kickoff project this summer, right? And it's being done exactly for what Nick said. It's, it's because we don't want parents having to drive through who knows what in September. So yeah, it won't be the day school closes, but it will be as soon as we, we get the site permit from, um, the city. And they'll be ready to go. Yes, definitely. Then we go into the phase where, uh, they get the bidding done. Then that's going to be another package that you're going to look at. And if you all say yes, that's great. Yes, the team is in place, the contractor's in place, and they will then break ground for the building. I just think of it in, in two different ways. The Loop Road, the big part of the Loop Road. Um, and this doesn't even include like putting the blacktop throughout the whole campus or anything like that. This is in the back, there's a hill. Um, and beyond the hill, they're actually going to have a, a, a wall built. And the little road is gonna go over that part there and they're gonna level it out so it isn't so steep. And it's gonna be wide enough for, for cars to go, to go down there. So that's the piece that we're talking about, which is going to be about five to seven hundred thousand dollars just for that retaining wall and that road that's going to connect the two pots of the campus. That's the only part we're talking about for the summer.
Yep.
Thank you. I apologize if I missed this, but what has been, um, the timeline that's been given for how long it should take to complete?
The same December. Oh, the road, the road is six weeks. It's, it's this summer, it's July and maybe halfway through August. Once they actually start the building, um, they, they are saying December of twenty twenty four. Uh, there are those on the team who think that's kind of a long date, we can probably cut that by, by a few months, but, um, that's, that's what we're looking at. But this is quick because it's really just the retaining, the retaining wall in the back there. I wish it was all the blacktop too, but not yet.
Great, thank you.
Further questions on, let's do it in, let's do it in pieces. So looking at this, uh, item C is the Loop Road conversation. Um, any further questions on the Loop Road part of the proposal?
I guess I'll ask one, one more question. Um, so Ellen, you said that this is going to be creating that hill and slope, but you said not the blacktop. So starting next school year, will, where will the traffic be going?
Um, you're gonna be going in by the one sixty-five building, that's your entrance. It's also, we're gonna have to put signage up. Um, but you'll be going in the entrance there, you're gonna go down by Smock, all the way through the back of the, the one sixty-five. And then you're gonna hit the Loop Road and then behind the upper school building, you're gonna break off into two. If you're dropping a child off in the upper school building, you're gonna veer off to the left. And then if you're gonna go straight around, you're gonna go veer off to the right, then you're gonna come all the way down and out by four kips. The seniors who park in the front parking lot, the buses will still come in through the front.
Roger, I think maybe to answer your question, that Loop Road is gonna be usable. What they may end up doing, and we can have a quick conversation with Bob, is they may throw what's called a binder coat on top of the areas that's affected where that hill is. So you're still gonna have the asphalt that goes behind one sixty-five, you're still gonna have the asphalt that goes behind one ninety-nine. But they may throw just a, a, a small binder coat on top to make that a smooth transition.
No, I'm sorry. No, it's, that's gonna be blacktopped. It's, it's, it's like the whole parking area that's kind of disintegrating and has potholes in it. That's not gonna be done.
The Loop Road will be ready to be driven on with no questions.
Yes, no questions, mid-August. Yes.
That, that answered my question.
So, so sorry, I, I, I was, my mind was thinking about the blacktop on the whole campus.
Well, that in itself is gonna be a really nice. Great, because I heard really terrible stories about people lining up at, since I'm out of town, I don't know this, but people lining up at hotels and everything to queue up for a cup. So, um, that'll be a really nice tangible thing for people to see and benefit from, and I'm sure it'll uh, make the city of Marlboro slightly happier.
Which is, which is why we're confident that they'll be able to push it through quickly and which is why we wouldn't want to delay tonight's vote, which again, we've kind of already talked about anyway. But we wouldn't want to delay tonight's vote because then we might not hit our end date and then could potentially cause problems come the school year.
So are folks feeling ready for a vote on the Loop Road portion? And if so, feel free to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve moving forward with the, uh, construction of the Loop Road.
I'll second. Maura.
Who is that, Maura?
Yep.
All right, so motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Sarah, if you want to call the roll?
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Uh, Samini Sampath?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
And Maura Webster?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Terrific. Uh, so then portion D was recommendation to move forward with the CD design phase of building project and vote. Um, so given that we've had a lengthy discussion, Ellen, just clarifying, this is to move forward with the construction design, the doc, I just want to completely.
Creation of finishing, yeah, finishing up the construction design drawings.
Drawing is great.
Yeah.
Okay, so further questions on this part of the vote, the drawings?
That estimated cost number was for the road, and then does this one have an associated cost with it?
Yes, so this is about three, another three hundred fifty or four hundred thousand, but it, it is part of the budget that's already been budgeted for the architects. So that's already been passed.
It's mostly just, I just want to understand the numbers, that's it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
The last set of drawings that we got, as, as I mentioned, brought the cost up, estimated cost up to another six hundred and seventeen thousand. You, you'll get another number, a, a final number in August, and that's the number that's really gonna be important for all of you to consider.
Okay, sorry, when you say brought the cost up, you mean the overall project cost up?
Yes, right, we had the one estimate in November. Um, and then we had another estimate, level of estimate with a little more detailed drawing that came in, in March. Um, that second drawing, which was a little bit more refined, the increase of the cost of that estimate was six hundred and seventeen thousand. So finance still felt that that was worth passing and it was going to go to all of you on the ninth. Um, then you will have a better number and a final number um, in August, which I think is kind of where we're focused right now. But we want to get the drawings done so that we have them, whether this building actually gets built this year or doesn't get built this year, we will have them for, until it does. And then Nick explained to us coding doesn't change that dramatically over a year or something like that. Um, so we, we should be okay, but that's a, that's a pretty big, deep discussion, which I think you'll all want to save until August.
Very quickly, just for everyone keeping to our current schedule, this is a ten minute warning.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, and I, I know you said this, um, so let's say, um, there's a scenario where we don't um, continue the project for a year or so, and we end up going with different companies based on their schedule. We own those documents no matter who we use going forward. I mean, I'm assuming we'll always be with this team, but I like to always plan for the worst case scenario. So we own them no matter if we had to switch. Um, which I don't, like I said, I don't anticipate it, but it's just a good thing. So it sounds like you checked that, so thank you. That's a good reassurance for us. So, yes.
All right.
Further questions on the design document phase? Hearing none is a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the finalization of the construction documents.
Second.
Samini.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this one? Hearing none. Sarah, if you want to call the roll?
Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Don Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaefer?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Sheila Kelly? Oh, she left, sorry. Cut that. Uh, Samini Sampath?
Yes.
Zachary Prescott?
Yes.
And Maura Webster?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was a, uh, that was a great, uh, great bunch of steps forward, um, and thank you really to the finance committee. Now that was a lot of work and that doesn't even go into really describing it. So thank you all very much. Um, turning the page, we are now looking at the capital campaign update. Maura Webster.
All right, thank you. Um, I will give sort of a, a brief update of what I have, and Ellen, please feel free to add um, anything that you and Marcy may have added to this. Um, but just a quick update for the major gifts campaign, we are still moving forward, advancing on our prospect list, working through local companies and parent connections. So a reminder, if anybody has connections out there to companies who would be interested and are very much aligned with our mission, um, let us know. We have some really good opportunities. Um, we also have coming up in April, a number of open house events and house parties, so people can learn more um, and hear about different opportunities to get involved. Um, Marcy, you know, has done a great job getting folks to campus, right? Getting some new folks into campus, elected officials who have not been yet to AMSA, um, who have been around for a while and have had great tours and experiences while they've been here. Um, and just building relationships, following up on pledges and, um, rekindling a lot of conversations and relationships, which has been great. Um, so Ellen, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. I don't have an updated number.
Oh, I did not think to, to grab an updated number. Um, so I don't have that, but, but we can, um, we can make sure we have that for, for next time. Um, Marcy has moved into a, a little, um, shoebox corner. It was a prom closet, and so she's got a little space over in the one sixty-five building if you're ever looking for. Um, we had a, a wonderful visit this week from Meredith Harris, who is the executive director over at the, um, Marlboro, um, Economic, um, what is it, Maura?
It's the MEDC, the.
MEDC, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, Economic Development, um, Commission Committee. And, um, and she had been in my office a number of times in, in that building, but had never even been in the upper school building. So we had a great visit, um, uh, she's gonna, she's a, she's a big help, great person, um, in, in the city. So that was a great visit this week as well. So, very good.
Awesome, thanks.
Marcy's working hard.
Yeah, she is a firecracker. She's awesome.
And I'll just make a casual reminder to our board to make sure you get your pledges in. Because I know that that is something that is important to show our support uh, so that Marcy can say that, uh, we have full support of our board. So if you have been forgetting to do that, um, as I have, uh, let's maybe have a goal by next meeting that we all have our pledges in.
Yes, and thank you to those who have made their pledges already. That's, we really appreciate it.
Questions for Maura and Ellen on capital campaign? If not, we'll move over to Ellen's executive update.
Okay, I, just a, a one last thought is that there is an RSVP on the campus tours and it's coming out or has been coming out in Mike Finkel's, um, e, uh, newsletter. Um, and, um, reminders, the daily announcements that he sends out. So you can just click on there and, and tell your friends to, um, to come on down and, and see the campus. We'll be taking them up through the labs and, um, to show them where the building is gonna be and, and the new Loop Road and all of that. So love to have them, um, join us. And also about the house parties, as, as, um, Maura mentioned, we have one set up in, in Maynard. Uh, if there's anyone in Maynard who would like to, to join, um, that'd be great. And if any of you would like to open up your home, please let Marcy know. She would love to work with you on that. All right, so I have, um, I'm gonna abbreviate a report for you tonight because I knew this was gonna be a long meeting. And so here we are, it's March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And I am gonna try to turn my page here, but it's not turning. Oh, there we go. Okay, so, um, we're just usually, for those who are watching who aren't familiar, we, we do have a a topic calendar that we've been using for years and updating. Um, and it, it talks about the information that the board wants, um, for me, and it's reminders to the different committees of the information that the board wants to hear at each meeting. And so, um, in March, um, annually, we talk about the lottery results. We had the lottery, um, not that many weeks ago. We talked about the waitlist, um, how many we've, we've pulled in, how many seats we've offered. And we look at the attrition, um, over the year. Um, and I, little bit, not really much of a building status, but I did want to mention it in my, um, in my report that we will go and plan on taking a number of votes, which we've already done. Um, and then also, um, as was mentioned, Kate Hogan, who's one of our state reps, um, came and spent about a night and a half with us, and it was a, it was a lovely visit. And then upcoming events. All right, so we had our, um, we had our lottery, as, as you all know, it's a, it's a blind lottery. And we had, oh, my little thing has moved, but my, my, the, um, the, the menu, oh, there we go, okay. Like the menu moved and I can't see it. We had a thousand sixty-three applications that came in, um, in December through, uh, the beginning of February. And then we, we run the lottery, we ran it through Power School, which was kind of exciting. For those of you who know, we're doing a switch over this year, um, from Reddicker, which is, is a program the school's had for, for a very long time. It's somewhat antiquated and we are in the middle of a Power School switch over this year. And this lottery was actually the first thing that we ran, um, using the Power School program. And, um, it went really, really well, so very happy about that. From the waitlist of the thousand sixty-three applications, it's broken down into, um, siblings and and obviously our core towns and non-core towns, and those are the, the, uh, what you're seeing across the top there. We did accept and, and offered seats to a hundred and forty-two sixth graders. Um, of those hundred and forty-two, those sixty of them were siblings. Um, zero from Clinton, nineteen from Hudson, eight from Maynard, fifty-five from Marlboro, and, and zero core towns, uh, non-core town, uh, students. There still is a waitlist of a total of three hundred and twenty-one sixth graders. Um, and some of those students will, will still be pulled off. You know, there's a number of families who might apply and change their mind at the last minute. Um, students who maybe don't want to leave their friends or where they are. Um, and so there, there's always some movement there, but Linda manages that, um, as we, as we start to get paperwork in from, from families. And, you know, sometimes folks, um, may have applied, but they really, um, don't qualify under the state regulations that, that we have to work on, under the, uh, lottery. So Linda takes care of all of that. We did not, um, offer any seats out in sixth and, in seventh and eighth grade, and that's customary. We don't typically do that at this point. We wait to see over the summer um, and sometimes early fall, if there's families who move, and then we have to backfill those seats. So, so if we have to backfill into, um, let's say a family moves and we lose a seventh and an eighth grader, um, then we pull off the waitlist, um, here. But right now, we're not offering any seats there. Um, all right, and then.
Ellen, can I ask a question on, uh, like grade seven, there's two hundred and sixteen kids, that seems large. Is that right?
Well, no, that's just how many applications we got.
Oh.
Yes, so we, we, we accepted a hundred and forty-two students or applications in sixth grade. But they, on the waitlist for seventh grade is two hundred and sixteen applications.
Okay.
So let's say a family moves out and a student leaves.
I see, I see. Okay.
It would come off, it actually would come off the siblings first.
That's a long list.
Yes, it is. Yes, and a hundred and seventy eighth grade seats, none of which have been, have been, um, offered out. We did accept ten ninth grades, um, students because we know that there's students that will, you know, potentially move to As, go to Asabet or, um, you know, back to their home district or, or whatnot. So Linda did accept, um, ten students already, and there, there were eight siblings that were on the list and also two Marlboro students were at the top of the lottery. Um, so on the waitlist for ninth grade, there's still two hundred and four students sitting on the waitlist there for ninth grade. Um, and, and that's where we are. So once again, um, last year was an all-time high of a thousand third, thirty applications, and this year we beat that to a thousand sixty-three. Um, so that is once again, um, good news, uh, for AMSA. Anyone else have any questions on how this information works?
Yes, oh, thank you for the year-over-year, uh, numbers, Ellen. The only other question was, for me, the total number of applications includes those in sixth, seventh and, uh, well, all of them, first of all, and the, and the siblings, correct? That's ten sixty-three.
The thousand sixty-three, if you add up a hundred and forty-two, the three hundred and twenty-one, two sixteen, one sixteen. 142, 321, 216, 170, 10 and 124, that adds up to, to 1,063.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, those, that's a total applications. And then what Linda did there for us is that she just broke it down into, to, to the different categories, and you could see how many siblings were accepted, um, or I shouldn't say accepted, offered seats, right? Because there's a lot of paperwork the parents have to submit once the seat has been offered, and they have to accept the seat.
A- a- any change in the proportions of the towns?
She as far as you mean
Year-over-year, so you're seeing more applications, and then are you seeing any shift in more applicants from a certain town or the other?
Not that I looked at. We, we, if you want more data like that, I, if that's easy enough to pull, um, but typically, we're just looking at these numbers and, um, and not necessarily comparing year to year. But I have, I mean, I have every board report I've done the last four years, so it's easy enough to see.
Um, just looking for trends, but not, nothing that needs to happen short-term. Just, it, it, it would be useful for us to see if there's any patterns there.
Well, you know, the, the interesting thing is that there were two years in a row, Samini, that we could not take students from Marlborough. So, that ends up kind of skewing your, your data, right? Because
Well, sure, but then do people know and they don't apply at all? They don't, right? They would apply.
They, they, they do, they would apply, yep. Um, but then who we accept, it, it definitely changed. But you're right, it wouldn't change the number of applications.
Yeah. Just understanding the communities we're serving and understanding, you know, where the needs are and how many people are applying. Yeah.
Sure, sure. Yeah, right now. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, I was gonna say, well, with that in mind, the communities we're serving, I was wondering, you know, there, there are four core towns of AMSA, and the numbers from Clinton and Maynard, two of those towns are are really quite low. And I mean, I know it's hard to say, you just have the siblings, we don't necessarily know what towns they're from, but then you look at them compared to these non-core towns applying. And I'm just wondering, what does that mean? Is, is there a lack of access? These people, those families from Clinton and Maynard feel that they have to AMSA? Um, I look at Dawn being a Maynard family. Um, are we not doing as well, kind of connecting with those communities? I just think those numbers are so low compared to these non-core towns.
The interesting, sorry, this is Dawn. Um, the interesting thing that I can speak to for Maynard, um, so the Maynard school population in general, in Maynard public schools, has dropped 20%. Um, and a graduating class or a normal class size, so the current sixth grade in Maynard or seventh grade, they're down to maybe 60 to 80 students, depending. I think one of our last graduating classes was under 70. Um, so I just, in general speaking, from Maynard, town of 10,000 people, uh, they've dropped a ton of populations, stu-, you know, they've got a lot of homeschoolers, um, after COVID. So, it's interesting, that eight from Maynard is probably 10% of the sixth graders. So, I, you know, it's an interesting question, Laura. Um, and I think it'd be really interesting to see it on a percent level versus a whole number, because that, I think you're, you know, the whole number doesn't tell the whole story. Um, but yeah, small town, small numbers, for sure.
Yeah, this is, this is, um, yeah, uh, Linda is texting me. She says, every parent in four towns receives notification of the AMSA lottery.
Oh, I know, of course they do. Of course, I'm just wondering if perhaps, like, these towns, there's not as much awareness and, you know, maybe there'd be more in, within these communities if that awareness isn't there.
The core towns, um, that we do presentations in every single one of the towns, back before COVID, I used to go down to the public libraries and do presentations. Uh, we send out mailings, we, you know, we are, we're on Facebook, where, um, there, there's a lot that the school actually does to try to get the word out. Um, at last year, we went to all the elementary schools in Marlborough. We were invited by the, um, superintendent there, and I, I actually contacted all the superintendents to all of our core towns, asking if we could send, please, hon, if we could send, um, flyers home about our virtual orientations and information sessions. Um, and Marlborough was the only one who sent us the information. So, we got mailing lists and sent out general invitations as well to every single, um, home in Clinton, Hudson, and Maynard, who had children um, in the, I believe, the, the fourth and fifth, uh, grades. Um, so, we, we really do do a lot of outreach. Um, but I, I do think too that, you know, when AMSA first, um, started, Laura, we actually were taking students in from more than 60 different towns. And that was mainly because the, um, the local folks, um, weren't happy about AMSA coming in, and they didn't want to apply. And so, we still have, you know, core town, um, non-core town students that have come in, that either, either come out in the waiting list or have come in during those days when, when our four-core town folks didn't want their students at our school. So, there's a lot of, lot of background and history that goes into these numbers. Um, but we've done, we have really done a lot of outreach, and I think that in the past, several years ago, I could go back and look, but we were getting about 700 or so applications. And I think that the 600, you know, the extra 663 is a testament to the outreach work, outreach work that Linda, um, Edwards and, and Mike Finkel and, and a number of other folks have done. These things are just raw numbers. These aren't percentages. These are actual Linda's actual numbers of, of how many kids and from what area they were, they were offered seats. Um, so, I, I usually show this every year and, and, um, folks typically um, find it interesting. Any other thoughts? All right, so one of the other things is attrition. Um, you know, students come and go during the year, various, um, situations with, with families and, and whatnot. Decisions are made. Um, at the start of the year, we had 966 students. Uh, we had 17 that withdrew over the year. That's from the first day of school until February 15th. And each one of those students needs to be backfilled, and Linda works to backfill each one of those seats. You can see that 17 is pretty typical, because in 2021, 2022, we also had 17 students who moved out, um, of the school. We added 12 students in this year. Um, last, the, last year, we added in 16, and that's the backfilling that I'm referring to. Um, and the reason why, uh, we are at 961 at the moment is that we had three withdrawals after February 15th, 2023. Now, the charter schools are not required to backfill after February 15th, because it seems late to yet to do so. No seats are added to, um, the lottery for, for the next year. Um, and we just, we just had, well, we had three students that left after February 15th, so that would brought us up to 15. And, um, Linda still had one seat prior to, you have to keep offering them out until February 15th. Um, and it was a ninth grade seat. We weren't able to get anyone, um, into that, and typically, because sometimes it's harder for ninth graders to leave where they are. Um, but those were, those were offered out.
Uh, my apologies, Ellen. Just to everyone know, this is a 10-minute warning for, uh, our current schedule.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, and these are just the places where in 2022, 23 students went. Two of them moved out of state, three of them moved within the state, three students went back to Hudson, four to back to Marlborough, three back to Clinton, and two back to Maynard. That is also pretty typical. All right, so this was just, once again, just so that I, I didn't leave the building project update out of my report, but just this is letting you know that the, the yes votes from tonight, this was the, the Loop Road and the construction drawings. We appreciate your vote. I've already sent a text to Cassania and Bob, and they're both very happy, and we'll communicate that to the team tomorrow. Um, this was just a, a quick couple of photos from, um, Kate Hogan's, um, visit. As I, as I mentioned, uh, Kate spent some time in my office too, reviewing plans and looked at, at, uh, pictures and Loop Roads and things like that, um, and talked about AMSA in the community. Uh, she was delightful, and we had a wonderful visit. Had a couple of our parents here. Um, the gentleman in the back, that's Darren Rose, um, who really has become, um, a right-hand person to Marcy, and I'm grateful to him for that. He's a terrific guy. Um, I had his daughter, uh, Amy, who graduated four years ago, um, super kid, and he has another, uh, child at the school as well. Um, upcoming events, we do have the house parties, which, uh, I mean, the house party and the two, um, I forgot to add in here, the, uh, tours. So, check Mike Finkel's emails for that information. Um, but the International Festival is coming up this Sa-, uh, Sunday at the Elks Club in Hudson, 10 to 2. Uh, Spring Break is coming up. And, uh, Drama Presents Aladdin, um, coming up at the end of April. We do have Arts and Science Night. Love to invite you all out to that. That's a terrific night. Really enjoyed that last year. Senior Night, often Board members will, uh, join us for that night as well, and that is gonna be at the Best Western here in Marlborough at 6:00 PM on the 27th of May. Uh, and then graduation is Friday, June 9th, um, and that is at Four Kicks as well, and you will receive an app, uh, an invitation to that. And I think everybody's happy to see spring. You, for those of you who've been around, those trees were cut down by our landlord, which is really sad. Although they did fit, smell like dead fish. Um, this is spring at AMSA, and we're very, very happy, um, to have the nice weather come again. So, that's my abbreviated report tonight. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ellen. That was great. Uh, if there's no questions for Ellen, uh, next up is Mr. Prescott with his faculty update.
Hey, uh, this will be a relatively quick update for everyone. Um, the first thing I would like to pass along from the faculty is condolences to the Board on the loss of a colleague and a friend in Ben Hamel. Um, the faculty wanted to make sure that was mentioned. Uh, additionally to that, I, of course, had a mix of responses to the ED discussion, some positive, some negative, as is to be expected with any large decision. Uh, the only other questions I had were financial-related, which I believe were answered by Ellen and Leanna. Other than that, I do not have any.
Questions for Zach? All right, uh, next up, Parent Rep Update for Laura.
Hi, um, so it's actually been a little quiet on the parent front too. Um, the one thing I've been hearing most about, and it could just be some of the parents in my network, and, and which ones I know, is, um, you know, a desire for more sports opportunities, um, for our students, especially the middle school students. Um, there's quite a significant interest and definitely not enough capacity. Um, I did reach out to Pete Jones, and he and I are gonna be, um, talking early next week, though, about some of this. So, um, he was very receptive to meeting, um, hearing more about some of these concerns and, and just seeing, yeah, if any, anything could be done. But that's really the big thing I've been hearing about lately.
My only thought on that is, is, well, first of all, Pete Jones is one of the most wonderful people in the world. I'm glad you got a chance to talk to him, because, um, Pete is actually a statewide, um, you know, recognized, uh, athletic director, and has done tremendous amounts of work here at our, expanding our, um, our offerings. I think you'll find it very interesting, Laura, when we start pulling apart the budget and present that in the next couple of months, and you'll see that AMSA pays. Um, our school's lost about 73, 74% um, of the cost of Four Kicks and the buses and, and all of that. And there's also a lot of limitations on how many uh, courts and things and fields that we have. But I, I think you'll find that, um, particularly interesting, because the Board, over the years that I've been involved, has been, have been incredibly supportive of our sports program. Um, and it's, it's a shame that, you know, we don't have more resources for, to offer more for the kids, but, but thank you. You'll appreciate Pete.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we know a lot, the parents know, I think a lot's been expanded, and they're just curious what else, and really, what could parents do to help? That's what I've been hearing as well. Um, it's not, we want AMSA to do more. It's more like, well, what, if we want more, what could we do? So, I'm hoping, you know, he has some ideas on that end.
Start a booster club, Laura. Start a booster club and have them, honestly.
I've had a couple, you know, mentioned, you know, oh, does, AMSA doesn't seem to have one, so, um, that might be something we'll discuss, yeah.
We, way, way back, um, I remember there being a small one, um, an AMSA Booster Club and raising tens of thousands of dollars is, is really what it would take to do any more. But we don't, also don't have access to any more baseball fields or soccer fields than we have, or even basketball at Four Kicks. But people tell you all about that. You'll love him. He's wonderful.
Great.
Anything else, Laura?
That is all I've heard.
All right, well, thank you for, uh, that's you doing a great job with that, and, uh, hopefully people find they have access to the Board either through you or contacting Bella or us directly. I know I'm hearing from people, uh, more often, uh, people coming up to me in town, which is sort of how it goes in Maynard. Um, so hopefully, we're doing a good job providing access, if, even if we don't always have the right answer or the, you know, if it takes some looking into. So, I think that's important for us to always know about. Um, so, in terms of Chair Report, our Chair is in Hawaii, um, so I do not have a Chair Report as Acting Chair. Uh, so we will go into Committee Reports, uh, starting with Education. Roger?
Sure. Um, Education met last, like, we had it, we had a good discussion about, uh, the Challenge Success Program, nothing, you know, no, no great, no items directly to report to the Board. And this upcoming me, meeting, we're looking to discuss ChatGPT. It's one of the major topics of the upcoming Education Committee Meeting.
What was that, Roger?
ChatGPT.
Roger, just a quick question on education. I've been meaning to, um, email you, but it's just as good to do here. Do you folks at all during the year look at sort of score trends? Um, I'm not necessarily a score-happy parent myself, but I enjoy trend analysis. Um, I don't know if that's something you do, but I've done a, um, bare-bones analysis of the core towns and sort of the year before COVID, all the way up till now, and just sort of seeing how the bounce-back numbers are looking, so whether, you know, and not that, again, I'm not really scores-focused, so it's kind of funny coming from me, but, um, but I know it's a very important stat for a lot of folks. Um, if that's, if that's helpful at all, I'm happy to forward it over.
Well, yes, yes, please forward it to myself and Mike and Ellen. Mike DeRocchi and Ellen Lindsay.
Sure. All right, will do. Anything for Roger and Education Committee? If not, we'll look at, uh, Maura for a Development Committee Report.
Hi, uh, I have a question, sorry. This is Pavaja here. Roger, uh, you said, of course, ChatGPT, what particular you have in, on the, on your mind on that one? What's the discussion about?
Um, they, they basically, the discussion was, uh, two, two points. One, to, um, just raise awareness of ChatGPT within the Education Committee, and also, um, to understand the, uh, schools persp-, the school's, uh, response to ChatGPT.
Did, we already posted the response for the ChatGPT, right? Like, you know, there was a policy that was already placed and sent, and, uh, the Department Chairs have been discussing all of that again. And I don't, forgive me for asking, I don't understand the, the purpose of that being the part of the Ed Committee Meeting. I didn't understand. Uh, because I am a part of that. So, I, I just wanted to understand what, what, what the questions are about and how this is going to, um, or what should we come prepared with? Like, you know, we already have a policy that is already sent to the parents and everybody. We talked about it before. If it is educating about the Ed, Education Committee of that, so maybe it should be a small discussion, not necessarily a huge discussion. I'm, I'm just suggesting.
Yes.
So, the, AMSA, I think the Department Chairs at AMSA have been on top of this, and they have actually, um, been working and training the teachers and how to do all of that, like, you know, internal PDs are going on about that.
No, I think
So, I think the time would be wisely used if it is set up or something else, just to suggest you.
Part of it is, part of it is just that to inform the members of the Education Committee as to the actions that AMSA has taken in regards to ChatGPT.
Okay, thanks.
All right, uh, so on to Maura.
Um, this will also be very brief. We met back on February 14th. The Development Committee has adopted a more sporadic schedule, um, so that we can work in tandem with the Capital Campaign and not actually butt heads with Imagine. There was a lot of overlap. Um, so the next time we will meet is on May 9th. Um, we have started talking about sort of events and community cultivation around the Capital Campaign. Specifically, we've got a big anniversary coming up in 2025, so the timing will, um, be sort of serendipitous with the projects and progress, so that's really good. Um, Mark is continuing to work on alumni engagement. There's another meeting coming up for that group. Um, and then really just talking about ways that as a And then really just talking about ways that as a committee and part of the community, we can support sort of this cultivation of building philanthropic momentum because we are now entering into this sort of phase in AMSA's existence where in order to continue to grow and excel, fundraising is actually a really important part. And so there's more of an emphasis on that now. So really building that culture here at the school. So a lot of that sort of behind the scenes, underground stuff to support the Capitol Campaign. But we'll have more in May.
And just, um, obviously if you said this and I missed it because I'm fifty, so I miss stuff. Is this the committee that's now going to meet quarterly? So there's not as much confusion?
Yeah, yeah, there was, there was starting to get, to be some overlap and sort of confusion over. So how do we, how do we do this? How do we help but not hurt the process? So we're, we're kind of falling uh, getting solid in what that role looks like, which is great.
Terrific. Questions for Maura on hearing none. Jill, are you Governance Committee report today?
Yeah, however, we didn't meet in March, so I don't have a report. And Sheila would have said the same thing. So we will meet in April and have probably a really big agenda.
That works. Uh, let's see, we have a section for other business. Does anyone have anything? I know that, you know, we'll start to think about the transition probably coming up in the next few weeks. When Raul gets back, I'm sure he'll have some thoughts to share on that. What else do we have? The survey will be happening in April. The Family and Faculty Survey. That's really all I have on this. I feel like we've been busy with so many other things that there can't possibly be anything else, but anyone else have anything to add in or something you'd like to see on the next agenda? Feel free to let Raul, myself, the whole board now. Happy to hear those things. But if nothing, I will, I will call for executive session.
Dawn, I would have one thing I'd like to get on a future, future board meeting, or I don't know, it's a task force or how, how we should approach, how best to approach this. That I'd like to see us do a retrospective and report out to the board on the hiring process for the new executive director.
Yeah, good one. Yep. Retrospective hiring. Yeah, no, it'd be great to document all that for sure. I'll add that in and I'll let Raul know as well. And I should say that we have been notified by the department heads that they would like to unionize. So no problem there. And that will be what we are discussing in the executive session. So so I guess that pauses an other business update as well. So anyone have anything else? All right. So we will head into executive session. We'll do a vote for that to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And Sarah, do you want to call a roll call? I've made a motion to go into executive session. I guess we need a second. Sorry. And we need Thank you.
So we have Dawn and Roger. Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Bella Gorman?
Yes.
Dawn Capello?
Yes.
Jill Schaper?
Yes.
Laura Burgess?
Yes.
Laura Webster?
Yes.
Mick Poirier?
Yes.
Roger Jarrett?
Yes.
Samini Sampaugh?
Yes.
And Zachary Prescott?
Epstein.
You're
Have a good night, Zach.
Thank you.
Are you inviting anyone to executive session?
Yes, we are inviting Ellen Lindsay and Joe Bartulis.
So noted. Now I will open up the other session. So you're going and you will not reconvene. You must say that as well.
We will. Thank you. We will not reconvene into open session. Thank you, Sarah.